Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city council meeting of Monday, June 3rd, 2019. Please rise for a prayer by Pastor Isaiah Brokenlake.
Good evening. Last time we do the direction song, so I'd like to do that again. So everybody, please face west. We all pray our turkey, ah, et tu ayo, ni tu kashi la, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. Cheki ayo, cheki ayo, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. Face east. Wazia takia, et tu ayo, ni tu kashi la, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. Cheki ayo, cheki ayo, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. Face east. We all pray our turkey, ah, et tu ayo, ni tu kashi la, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. Cheki ayo, cheki ayo, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. And back. I pray our turkey, ah, et tu ayo, ni tu kashi la, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. Cheki ayo, cheki ayo, ah, hitu ayo, ke lo he. To complete the circle and face upward. Wakanta kiya, et tu ayo, wakanta ka, he chi ahe, yo, ke lo he. Cheki ayo, cheki ayo, ena ho ta, he, yo, ke lo he. And turn and face the earth. Makata kiya, et tu ayo, unchi makaki, he chi ahe, yo, ke lo he. Cheki ayo, cheki ayo, ena ho ta, he, yo, ke lo he. Creator, we give you thanks for all you are and all you bring to us for our visit within your creation. We remember that through you we are all related and that you call us to be good relatives to one another. Help us to be that good relative by building new relationships across the differences we allow to divide us. Help us to create healthy communities for this generation and those to come as we work providing our communities the knowledge, tools, and skills for healthy choices, healthy environments, and healthy futures. Lord, send down upon those who hold office in the city of Watertown your spirit of wisdom, charity, and justice that with steadfast purpose they may faithfully serve in their offices to promote the well-being of all people. We confess that it's often easier to stay comfortable settling for things as they are rather than working to make them better. Give us courage and strength to step out of our conference zones collaborating across our community persevering beyond politics, resistance, and apathy. Help us to transform our world into one where we have strong relationships, strong communities, and where we see and respond to the humanity in all people. Amen.
Thank you. That was beautiful. Please join me in the Pledge of Legions.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, my nation, under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please. Okay. Albertson?
Here.
Bueller?
Here.
Danforth?
Here.
Lalum?
Here.
Manti?
Here.
Roby?
Here.
Solom?
Here.
Thorson? Absent. Vilhauer?
Here.
Y?
Present.
Thank you. All right. Good evening. First item on the agenda is approval of the consent agenda. Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Bueller, second by Manti. Any discussion? Councilman Vilhauer?
On one E, is that, is that ready for approval as a consent item?
We discussed.
Did we, was that, is what we discussed at the last meeting, so we're good to go then?
Yes, we discussed it pretty thoroughly last time.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item two is public comment, and this is the time set aside for anyone who would like to make a public comment to step forward and do so. Does anyone here? See none, we'll move on. Item three is approval of the agenda. And before I get a motion, I would like to remove item eight. We're not quite ready for that. But now I'd like a motion for approval as amended.
So.
Motion by Vilhauer and second by Y. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item four is application for a special retail malt beverage and wine license to Watertown Area Chamber of Commerce from 4:00 PM on Friday, July 19, 2019, until 11:00 PM on Saturday, July 20th, 2019, at Stokes Thomas City Park. And I will open the public hearing for this, and I know we have the chamber president here in case anyone has any questions. But would you like to come speak at the public hearing, Tim? Want to say anything? State your, state your name and then promote it.
Yep, certainly. This is Tim Sheehan from Watertown Area Chamber. Again, this is just for Coconac and Pesca for our annual event out there. Pretty much has been going on for a few years, and hopefully this year with the weather be perfect, we'll have another successful event.
Great. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak about this? See none, I'll close the public hearing. And look for a motion for approval. Move by Y, second by Manti. And is there any discussion or questions on council part? Councilman Roby?
I will recuse myself from this item as well as item number five.
Noted. Anyone else? Councilman Vilhauer?
Tim or Matt, I've got a question because I've had this question asked of me, and I'm never quite sure. Okay, you sell the beer, the beer, the wine in the beer tent, right? Does that, does that then, does this allow consumption then throughout the premises, not just confined to the beer tent area?
Well, the beer tent, I mean, they're not confined to that area because it's an open park. I mean, you can walk from your camper anywhere you want and then park and drink beer. So it's, yep, one time we did kind of confine it, but it was really confined. So several years ago, we kind of did away with that.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Yes.
I'd just like to ask, Tim, is there still discussion of the alternate location?
No, not at this point. And Matt and I did talk about a contingency to have the, in the event, Coconac and Pesca couldn't be at the location because of the water. We did, our parking that we were concerned about, we will be able to move that to the casino speedway. Todd Goodman, really good, and said, whatever, just make it happen. The other events can take place, the new campground that's just had a brand-new road put on it. We don't want to put a lot of vehicles in there, damage that. But some of that's still underwater, and it's still maybe underwater at that time, but we'll just have to deal with, deal with that. The ski show will go on. It's the only place in town we can have the ski show. So we decided to leave it there.
Any other questions? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number five is application for a special retail malt beverage and wine license to Lake Area Zoological Society from 6:00 PM until 9:00 PM on Friday, July 26th, at Bramble Park Zoo. And this is for Zufari. And I see some zoo reps here. And so I will open the public hearing. And Jamie Stricker's here from the zoo. Do you want to promote it?
Yes.
Tell us a little about it.
So Jamie Stricker from the Bramble Park Zoo. And this event used to be called Zufari, and we did change it. So now it is called Sippin Safari. We changed it a little bit. So it used to be in June each year, removing it to July. Tried to maybe find a weekend that wasn't quite so busy, so we changed the event. And then we are going more towards entertainment and foods, not as much the cultural aspect because of the issues with the multicultural center and things like that. We just decided to kind of try something new. Our visitation was a little stagnant the last couple of years, so hopefully a new weekend, new name. We'll get more people to come to the event.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak at the public hearing? See none, I will close the public hearing and look for a motion for approval. Move by Manti, second by Y. Any discussion? Anyone have questions for Jamie? Don't see any questions, so I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number six is the first reading of ordinance number 1906, amending the district zoning map of the city of Watertown, South Dakota for property generally located north of the sailboat landing on Lake Compesca and legally described as lots 21 through 27, Block 2 of Lakewood Edition, from R1 Single Family Residential District to C3 Highway Commercial District, subject to all planning requirements. Now, this is just a first reading. There won't be any action. But I see there are some people in the audience that if, if they'd like to speak, I will give people the opportunity to do that. But first, I'll ask the city engineer Heath Von I to describe what's going on here.
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. So the owner of this property, Mr. Roger Dolly, has petitioned to rezone the described property from currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential District to a C3 Highway Commercial District. One of the, one of the logics of rezoning to a C3 is that it is adjacent to Highway 20 and meets all the other C3 zoning requirements, or would upon a passing of this, of this rezone. At the May 23 Plan Commission meeting, the rezone request was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission to the city council by a six-to-one vote. And one condition was added to that motion, that a replat of the property be required as a result of the rezone being approved. The reason for the necessary replat is that the parcel as a whole that's under one ownership is technically platted as seven separate lots. Those individual seven lots do not meet on their own the minimum size requirement for a C3 zoning district. So they would need to be combined to meet the minimum 20,000 square foot land area for that C3 zoning district. Once those seven lots are combined, they by far exceed the minimum lot size requirement for a C3 district. That was the only condition placed on the approval at the Plan Commission level, and it's before the council tonight, first reading. And public hearing and second reading will be at the next council meeting.
Right. Okay, thank you. I reiterate, it's not a public hearing tonight. But did you want to say something, Councilman Danforth?
Before we get, if there is some public input on this, it might be helpful for us to maybe brush through what the uses would be so that we'd be familiar with that in addressing some of their concerns.
Sure. Heath, do you have a list?
I do have a list, Madam Mayor. I apologize, I didn't have one prepared to put up on the screen. But some of the permitted uses in the C3 district are a service station for motor vehicles, retail establishments, service establishments, hotels and motels, motor vehicle sales, office buildings, financial institutions, restaurants, clinics, veterinary clinics, automobile parking lot, and farm machinery and/or semi tractor, semi truck sales. And then there is a list of several conditional uses, 20 of them to be exact, that would have to have conditional use approval at the Plan Commission level, the BOA.
All right, thank you. Councilman Vilhauer?
I've got a follow-up question on those same lines. As I understand it and watching the Planning Commission meeting, there was some concern about a C3 designation versus C2 being a little bit more restrictive. But we do not have the, I guess I'm addressing it to you, Matt, we don't have the authority to change that. In other words, it's either up or down on the C3. And then, I mean, that's as far, in other words, we, we cannot change the designation ourselves as a council action. Is that correct?
Well, if the, if the applicant were to come back forward with that application, but at the time of action, it's been noticed as a request to rezone to a C3, so I would say no. There is, you know, statute does allow for minor amendments at the time of action, but I would say that that would not qualify as a minor amendment.
That's a good question.
Thanks, Matt.
That's come up before, so it's good to exercise that. Councilman Albertson?
Heath, just building on, I didn't happen to watch the Plan Commission, but building on what Mike had asked there, what is the plan for out there? I heard somebody say that that's the concern that the people have is that it was a little ambiguous as to what was going to be put out there. Do you, do you know the answer to that or not? Maybe you don't know it.
No, that's a great question, Councilman Albertson, Madam Mayor. So in the discussion at the Plan Commission level, the applicant was present at that meeting. He's, he's present here this evening as well. And I'd be glad to invite him to the, to the desk to share any intentions of this rezone. I would, Heath, caution though, that any time a rezone is before the board, we would want to definitely consider the entire list of uses and not get as much hung up on the particular proposed use. Reason being, over time, of course, ownership could change, uses could change, and anything on that list that's been accepted by ordinance could end up on that, on that parcel. But as far as the immediate intentions, the owner is here. And Mr. Dolly, if you'd care to share or expand on what some of the intentions are?
All righty. I guess most of you know me. What our, what our plan for is to have a small store there and do rentals, like the tube deals you pull behind jet skis and probably sell bait and tackle. It's kind of a low-key deal. Nothing, no high-volume traffic.
Would you please state your name for the record?
Oh, Roger Dolly. Sorry.
Thank you. And as Heath said, though, I mean, you have to be careful.
Oh, yes.
When C3 is approved, if it's approved, any of the allowable uses would be permitted for a structure in there without any public input required.
But it would be a nice lot for a boat dealer to park some boats there, or boat docks, or jet skis, any of that stuff, you know?
Right.
Anything else?
Anyone else have questions? Councilman Danforth?
Do we have, again, I'll go back to probably this side of the room here. Do we have the ability to, in considering a C3 zoning, can we restrict the uses? Or do we, is it all or nothing?
Another good question, Councilman Danforth. The, when it comes to the zone, and once the rezone is approved, they would have, the owner would have at their, at their choice, any of the approved uses in our zoning ordinance. If, if you start to restrict on a per-applicant basis, that really gets the city into a kind of a, an area we probably don't want to be getting into because of the concerns for the subjectivity that comes into play there. So generally speaking, when a community adopts a zoning district for a particular property, that property owner has at their disposal all the approved uses for that zoning district. Now, we do have a list of conditional uses. Those we do through the BOA approve or deny their use based on the conditions at each property location. But the, the approved uses, the permitted uses are at the owner's disposal to choose from.
Well, I can understand. I, I may agree. And I think, Mr. Dolly, I think your intention sounds reasonable to me in regards to what could go there. But when you consider some of the other items that could go there, again, going back to what Heath had said, we can't, we can't focus on what, what your intention is. We have to look at what others may do if they were to buy the property, or something that you could do if it didn't work out. There certainly are some items on there that would probably bother me if I lived by there. And I probably wouldn't want them. But it would be good to, maybe to hear from the people in the public that, if there is concern with that, so.
Okay.
Anyone else? Is there anyone in the audience that wanted to add to that?
Mike Lawrence. I'm just a resident out there. I live at 640 North Lake Drive. I've been helping Roger throughout this application because of my passion for the lake and seeing some commercial usage at the lake. I think a, a place that's propped between a, a highway and a, or a public boat landing, we don't have a lot of optimal places for, for commercial on the lake because it's a highly developed lake. We're running out of places for things to bring in tourism, which will increase the revenue at the lake and bring in, you know, like places like North Shore. It's another thing to drive people out to there. You know, they come out and they rent a jet ski. They, they rent a tube. They have a boat stored there. They buy a boat, rent a jet ski, things like that. If we're, if we want businesses like that out there, we need to drive people out there to utilize those businesses. Yes, there's going to be some places that are better than others. But going around the lake and trying to find another place that's propped between a major DOT highway and a public boat landing, it kind of made sense for me, and that's why I came up and, and was helping Roger with this. I keep going to meetings, and we met all last winter on, on commercial property on the lake. We don't have the correct tool for Lake Compesca. But that, that, that conversation has probably been going on as long as Bruce has been on this board. I mean, the, the, there's never been the, the correct tool to, to do it at, at Lake Compesca. And at some point, I think, either if we're not going to get that tool, we have to give some leniency to the person by the lake that he's not going to put a truck and trailer repair spot there. And yet, let him utilize his lot, land for a commercial activity and try to bring people out to Lake Compesca and try to, try to increase the tourism here. Because we do have a gem, and we're losing retail every single day. And if you look at big, big lakes, like even now Ponce it with Four Bars, you, you go down there and places to eat and places for people to go, it's, it's, they're drawing from us. I go down there. Thursday night, Smokins has crab and steak, and it's awesome. You get to sit and look at the lake and have a nice meal. And I get that North Shore is doing that, but I don't think, if we don't provide other things, if North Shore just alone, won't do it. I mean, the golf course is the prop. Everything that we're putting into this lake will help support itself. And I think what Roger has planned for that, for that piece of land will help drive people out to the lake. And I think that's something that we, we need if, if we want to keep improving our bike paths and, and our roads and, and water quality and things like that. We have to drive up sales tax. And I think that commercial property at Lake Compesca is a huge avenue for that. And I, I give Roger props for wanting to take something on like that. It, you know, he's retired, and he's deciding that he's going to take a jump and a gamble and get into some commercial activity. I think it's a pretty good deal.
Thanks, Mike. Anyone else? Councilman Danforth?
Mayor, we've talked about the special zoning for the lake. Where are we at with that? Because this, this really is another example where if we had a lake district, per se, that we could redefine C3 to make sure that what goes in there commercially is going to adapt well to that environment, which is going to be different than highway commercial on Highway 212.
Right.
So I was just curious as to where we're at with, with making progress with the, the lake zonings.
Yeah. Well, we're getting near to being done with our Lake Compesca master plan, which will have some zoning recommendations in it. And once we get that, then we can move back into that mode of implementing some sort of a change. But it's not going to be quick, and a uniform change is going to be slow in coming. I could see possibly putting a condition, and Matt, correct me if I'm out of line saying this, but you, could you put a condition on the zoning ordinance that would say if within five years, a lake commercial zone is created, which might be more appropriate that the, whoever's the owner of the land will consider rezoning? We don't know what it will be. I mean, it, wouldn't want to bind anybody's hands to that, but yes.
One more comment I'd like to make is, you know, the North Shore slash Lunkers land was for sale. Came up at the courthouse steps. Anyone could buy that. It was a C3 property. Somebody could have bought that and put a truck stop in there. They didn't. But you have to understand that we have that there. It is half, half a mile down from this exact piece of land. There's C3 right there. They have, they're right next to a house and have more parking than Roger could ever fit on his property. I mean, for apples for apples, this property and that property, this actually has a bigger buffer. It has a road all the way around it on each side compared to the C3 property we currently have at the lake.
Right. The community has said they want this sort of thing. We've, you know, seen that in multiple community meetings through our visioning process back in 2012 when we did the H2O20, and also during our Compesca master plan process. People want more activity at the lake and just want to make sure that it's done in a way that protects the existing uses. Fortunately, all of the residential lots adjacent and across the street from this property are very deep. And some of those lots at Lake Compesca are not. But the ones in this general vicinity are pretty deep, so they, they have the ability to, you know, separate themselves physically from a change of use. So, anyway, this is a, going to be a public hearing at the next council meeting, and I expect that there will be a packed room with people on both sides of the issue. And this is how we work through our issues in this community, through our process. Councilman Vilhauer?
Just a comment, I would encourage, I guess, obviously, anyone but colleagues up here in the council to, to watch the video or the discussion of the, what, May 23rd or whatever that count, that Planning Commission meeting, Dave, it was a very good discussion that laid, laid out some of the issues very clearly that were being discussed. So I would encourage members of this board to take a look at that video.
Thank you, Councilman. That was recommended by the Plan Commission to change the zoning, and they didn't take that lightly. There was a lot of testimony, and I'm assuming we'll see similar testimony at the public hearing before the council at the next meeting. So we can be prepared for that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Just to confirm, Councilman Vilhauer, it was May 23 Planning Commission meeting for anybody that would want to reference that.
Right. Anything else? All right, we'll move on then. Item number seven is approval of Resolution Number 19-23 for the plat of Calvin Industrial Park, First Edition, to the city of Watertown in the county of Cottington. I'll look for a motion and second for approval. By Lalum, second by Vilhauer. And Heath, will you please describe this for us?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. The Watertown Development Company is the proprietor of this particular plat. They have submitted a plat of the Calvin Industrial Park, First Edition, which followed their preliminary plan, which was previously approved by the Planning Commission at the May 9 meeting. The plat of Calvin Industrial Park will create three conforming lots designated as I1 Light Industrial, which was recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at the May 23 meeting. A development agreement is pending. We do need to finalize that before we can actually file this plat. We need to have the development agreement in hand, or the public improvements have to be constructed prior to filing the plat. So that would have to be a condition of the motion that the development agreement is executed before the filing of the plat, if you so choose to approve the plat this evening.
Right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments? This was recommended by the Plan Commission, correct?
Correct, May 23 meeting as well.
All right. No question. Oh, Councilman Lalum?
Did you say we need to amend that?
Did you say we need to amend that?
Just so that, I don't know if it necessarily has to be in the motion, but we do, we cannot administratively go ahead with the filing of the plat till the development agreement is in hand. I don't know if we need that part of the motion, Matt, or not, but.
I would make your motion contingent on the eventual approval of the development agreement. I'd make the motion on that.
All right, a motion has been amended. Who seconded that?
I'll concur with that as a second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number nine is approval of resolution number 19-24 contingency transfer, general and capital improvement funds. And I'll look for a motion and second for approval. Moved by Albertson, second by Roby. And Kristen, I'll let you explain this to us.
Thank you, Mayor. Before you is the contingency transfer. It's got two items on it. The first item is actually for an expense for an ambulance repair. If you do have specific questions, I see Don is in the audience. He can help with any of that. The second item, though, is part of the HVAC bid that we actually approved at the last one and there was a discussion about do we do a contingency or a budget supplement? And so this is the contingency transfer in front of you. With the approval of this resolution to take from the $300,000 contingency, we would have a remaining balance for the year of $251,500 if this is approved. So if you do have specific questions in regards to the ambulance repair, I'm in support of doing the contingency transfer. It was a very large expense to one of the pieces of equipment. It's one of the things where each department has a certain amount of money set aside for equipment, repair, maintenance, but sometimes they're a little bit bigger than planned, so, thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilman Lalum?
Don, can you just explain what we had to repair on the ambulance?
Sure, Adam. We had a 2009 ambulance. It was one of the Ford ambulances that had the 6.3 liter engine in it. And Ford's kind of had a issue with these ambulances as far as, actually the motor itself, the fleet itself. And we've been having problems with injectors with it over the last two, three, four years. We replaced injectors in it about two years ago at about $15,000. And just recently, a month ago, we had to replace the engine and the differential as well. So we're at about $21,000 with those two major expenses. So it left us with very little money in our equipment maintenance budget. We are going to replace that. It's in the plan for 2021.
All right, thank you. Other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number 10 is approval of variance from ordinance section 24.0610 to allow lowest floor elevations to be less than two feet above the normal groundwater elevation. And I will look for a motion and second to approve this variance and then we're going to talk about it. Motion by Manti and second by Bueller. And Heath, if you could go ahead and explain what the issue is here.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So before the council this evening is a potential variance approval from a section of chapter 24 subdivision regulations. In chapter 24 city code, this is a stipulation or regulation that outlines the lowest floor elevation at which it can be constructed in relation to the groundwater elevation. In the plans that we, get submitted to us for review, they're required to have on those preliminary plans the normal groundwater elevation. And in consideration of that normal groundwater elevation, the lowest floor elevation for any of the structures in that subdivision are supposed to be two foot above the normal groundwater elevation. The applicant that submitted a building permit for a single-family residence up in the northeast part of town in the Prairie View subdivision was not able to meet the two-foot above groundwater stipulation and is seeking a variance, I believe it's four or six inches, to be a foot and a half above the current groundwater elevation that's been monitored out there over the past week. So this discussion at heart tonight is just that. The applicant is seeking roughly a six-inch variance to this two-foot regulation to have the lowest floor for the structure to be a foot and a half above the groundwater elevation instead of two feet above the groundwater elevation. So I like, you know, to focus the council's attention to that item in particular, but this does beg the question of this section of the ordinance, the appropriateness of it, the applicability of it. Obviously Watertown has a lot of groundwater presence throughout a lot of our subdivisions. And our residential housing in particular has to deal with the sump pumps running and the sump pumps to protect their below-ground surface elevations in their houses, their basements, their finished basements. I believe that the intent behind this regulation was to help try to minimize the necessity for sump pumps to have to continually protect individual property owners' structures from being inundated with groundwater. I think that the logic behind it is that if you put that lowest finished floor elevation, two foot above that groundwater table, and most sump pumps are anywhere from 18 to 24 inches in depth, in theory, you wouldn't have a sump pump running very frequently except for in high groundwater conditions. So I think that it's from a common sense standpoint, a practical standpoint on trying to minimize the amount of sump pump activity throughout the community. I can only speculate that's why this regulation is in place. From that perspective, I agree completely with the mindset behind that regulation. But before traveling down any more conceptual thoughts here of the larger picture behind this regulation, I'd certainly entertain any questions. The applicant, Mr. Heileman, is here this evening if we have any questions for him related to this particular lot. And we can talk through this a little bit further with the council.
Before we talk about the specifics of the question, could you explain what would be the problem with having less than the required clearance from the groundwater elevation? What kind of problems would that create?
Absolutely. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for bringing that up. And actually, I forgot, I do have a diagram, Pete, if you could pull up my screen for us, please, of a typical sump pump installation in a basement. Do you have the right monitor up? Okay, good. Is that zoomed in adequately for the council's view?
Could zoom a little bit more? And even go just a hair more? Okay, there you go.
So in this diagram, you have the lowest floor, which is this concrete slab here. You got the structure footings, the foundation wall. Outside here, you can see the ground elevation. And of course, here you have your sump pit, your sump hole that houses residential structures are required to have by building code that the city adopts. Now, what we don't have in this diagram, and I apologize, is a line representing the groundwater elevation. But let's say the normal groundwater elevation lies right beneath this sump hole at a depth of two feet below the lowest floor elevation. So in theory, your sump hole sits there dormant while the groundwater is normally at an elevation below it. And in times of fluctuation of the groundwater, like the times we're in right now where the groundwater elevation is high, it will end up collecting in this foundation drain system and end up in the sump hole and of course get pumped out into either the residence yard. Sometimes they're piped out to the curb and gutter. And that becomes the point where the neighborhoods have to deal with and homeowners have to deal with the continuous flow of the sump flows. And that's where I think we come back to, you know, the impacts of not having these sumps at least two foot, or excuse me, the lowest floor at least two foot above the groundwater elevation. Let's say we go a foot and we require a foot above the groundwater elevation. Well, by default, if your sump is 18 inches to two feet deep, your sump pump is going to be continuously pumping because it's always immersed into that groundwater table. And that's a condition that is up to the council to regulate. And in my professional opinion, would not be an ideal condition for neighborhoods to have to endure. Again, that's completely up to how we want to govern this as a governing body of the council. But I think we're all aware of some of the issues that continual pumping of sump drains and groundwater can cause in neighborhoods. It not only has an effect on the homeowner's property, you know, how saturated their lawns can become. It also can have an impact in the long term on the public infrastructure. You'll see some neighborhoods that have continual pumping and you'll see that the asphalt adjacent to the curb and gutter has begun to ravel over the years because of that constant presence of water. So you do have issues like that. Also tend to migrate and cause public infrastructure damage as well. So that's some of the thoughts and ideas behind the logic here on why this regulation's in our books. And I know it took a long time to answer that question, Madam Mayor, but I hope I answered it effectively.
That's all right. I think you did a good job. Councilman Danforth, did you have a question?
I have a couple of questions. You said that this particular lot was not able to achieve the two-foot requirement. How is it not able to achieve that? And then the second thing is, do we know or do we have an understanding that if whatever the normal groundwater height is, how much variation do we get in that? Does it, if this is normal, does it go up three inches? Does it go up six inches? How much of a variance do we typically see, like in years like this compared to whatever normal is? So those are questions I have, but I'd really like to understand why it's not able to be at the two-foot level. Because that's really, we're being asked to change something without being told why.
Yes, absolutely. To that first question, Councilman Danforth, in all credit to the applicant, Mr. Heileman, I'm not certain, I don't believe, it's my understanding, that this regulation hasn't been uniformly applied. Mr. Heileman is accustomed to building his homes with the foundation above the groundwater, but not necessarily with the lowest floor two feet above the groundwater. He has proceeded with a land transaction for this particular lot. He's got a home builder, a home buyer that wants him to build a structure on this lot. That structure's been sized and designed accordingly to fit on this lot. And so with that design in mind, that's why he's unable to, according to him, meet the two-foot regulation. If he has to increase the elevation of that structure by the additional six inches, it kind of throws out the design that they had in mind for this lot. And again, he could probably better address any of the specifics to that issue and why he couldn't meet that. But from what I've gathered, that's my understanding of the situation.
I would like to say if you go to Menards or a home supply store and buy a sump kit off the shelf, it's probably two feet, 30 inches or three feet deep normally. And if you put the pump at the bottom of that and then you have groundwater at 18 inches, it'll be pumping continuously. So that's an issue for the future homeowners that they'll have a continuously, possibly continuously running sump pump. It's an issue for the neighbors sometimes. We don't deal with the issues between neighbors. Those are civil issues that don't involve the city, but people do come to us and ask for help. Their neighbor's sump is constantly flowing into their yard and into their foundation and into their basement. And can't we do something about it? And we do get those kind of complaints regularly. This year, it's off the charts because the groundwater level is higher. But in this particular neighborhood, the groundwater is always higher. And I think that two feet deep for groundwater, that would be extremely shallow. The groundwater is probably more than two feet deep. But if they're not doing a slab home, if they're putting in any kind of a basement at all, it's going to be close to the groundwater level. So do we want constantly pumped water? No, that's what we're inviting if we are, unless they do a custom-designed sump, there will be water in it pretty much at all times. Now, there is in a two-foot diameter, two-foot depth, a certain amount of capacity for when you have a rainfall event and the rainwater soaks into the ground and gets next to the foundation. It'll be collected by that foundation drain and go into the sump. And if the sump is partially full, the capacity of the sump is reduced. And you could make the sump larger, have a larger diameter in order to compensate for that. That's what some places do. You can buy, a typical sump is 18 inches diameter or 24 inches in diameter. But you could probably get one that's 30 inches in diameter or maybe do a custom one. You can always do a custom sump if they wanted to do that. You don't have to buy one off the shelf. But those are some things to consider if we're starting. And I have asked the staff from the moment that I became mayor and I ran on the platform that all of the ordinances will be enforced and they have been. I haven't authorized anyone to administratively grant variances because variances need to be, there's a process for that. In this case, for our subdivision ordinance, the council or the planning commission can issue a variance. And in this case, when the question was asked, the next meeting was a council meeting. So the council's considering a variance to the subdivision ordinance. This will be the first subdivision variance, I think, that has ever been requested. They have been maybe in the past without knowledge. I don't know. The developer said he's put a lot of these in with, you know, well, we know that. We have people that pump 24 hours, seven days a week, in some cases, year round. And they have saturated yards or there's moss growing in the gutter and there's water on the pavement. Those are the reasons you wouldn't want to give a variance, but those are the issues. Councilwoman Manti?
Well, I'm just curious because I think if anybody's ever gone through that intersection of Fourth Avenue and Third Street where you drink, one house has, actually must have three sump pumps because there's three different hoses coming out and the house on every corner has at least two. And they do, they're 24/7 sump pumps. And even in other, we haven't had this kind of wet season and they still pump. And I'm just curious if those houses were built prior to, how long this, you know, code has been around? Could it be that those houses were built prior to this two-foot? Or, you know, because obviously they pump water 24/7, you know, so. And they have since, in the 10 years I've lived near that intersection, so.
That's an older neighborhood.
So they probably.
Our subdivision ordinance probably dates back to the 1980s.
There probably is one house that would be newer than that, yeah.
Councilman Lalum?
I got a couple of questions on this. Dale, which, where's this lot located at?
So now, Dale Heileman? It's up in Prairie View. It's the addition that we did up there on 27th and Cherry.
So it's on 27th Street?
Yeah, 27th Street.
Okay.
Yes.
So if we did happen to grant this, there are other options as far as getting it so that sump basket maybe isn't as high, sort of a two-foot, maybe like an 18-inch or wider? Or is that what we're talking about?
Well, my first argument would be that this has been on the ordinance for forever and we've never enforced it until this spring now. Any other time I've always did, I've always had the inspector come up. We dug the basement. We had to have the footings out of the water. We could not have them in the water. And that's how we've done it. I've been here for 30 years. Now this comes along this spring and, you know, in the worst year ever as far as water level height. I drilled a hole in this lot a week ago today and the water has went down 10 inches in a week. So asking what the water level does, every house I built in that neighborhood, the footings were not in the water when I built it.
Yeah, we're compounded this year because of what it is.
Everybody's pumping water. It's not just this community or that area. I mean, it's everywhere in town. I mean, I got people that haven't pumped water since 97 pumping water. So that's, what brought it on is why are we enforcing it now that we didn't before? And the house that I'm building there, I've already redesigned it and we're going to do a six-foot wall instead of an eight-foot wall. And that six inches makes a big difference in the. And that six inches makes a big difference in the, in the, in the steepness of the driveway going into the garage. That six inches means a lot there. So you look at that lot dropping ten inches over seven days, what's it going to be like in another, another week? I mean, it will be, I mean, so on a dry year, you could punch that in the ground another two feet. So does that make it right then? You know, we're just, we're just playing with numbers, you know. It, it changes every year. So it's a moving target.
Keith, where do we come up with the groundwater at a normal level? Because that's, that's what really probably is in play more this year than anything else.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's a great question. And it kind of comes back to Councilman Danforth's second question earlier that I didn't touch on is the groundwater levels and how they fluctuate. They do fluctuate. I mean, it's, it's obviously fluctuate. And Mr. Heilmann's knowledge of, of this particular lot over the past week has fluctuated ten inches. It was ten inches higher last week than it was today. So in the, in the subdivision regulations, the section that this is under is housed in actually the street design section of the sub regs. And when we're designing our streets, we obviously don't want the subgrade, the, the base course part of our street sections to be inundated with groundwater. Because that would just, it would compromise the life of those, of the asphalt paving or the sometimes concrete paving. But in that section, it refers to also the lowest floor of these structures as well. And so in the preliminary plan, the engineer for the developer is to indicate on that preliminary plan not only the normal groundwater elevation, but the lowest proposed finished floor elevation to be two-foot above there. Now, here's where it comes, that I'll admit, it's not an exact science. When the developer's engineer creates that preliminary plan, you know, their groundwater elevation might be here. Two, three, five years later, when a home builder comes on site to build a house, that groundwater elevation could now either be up here or it could be down here. So I don't want to necessarily say it's arbitrary. It at least does give us a starting point to work with at the time of that preliminary plan. And it gives us something to go off of rather than nothing. That is the benefit of this rule. But I do admit, it's, it's hard to make it an exact science without doing a lot of further invest geo, geotechnical investigation, groundwater level monitoring, maybe creating different zones throughout the community where we know what we would want to classify as a normal groundwater elevation. That would take a lot of exploratory work and some time to accumulate that kind of data to say, if you're building in this part of town, let's go with this elevation for groundwater table. Over in this other region of town, maybe it's a different elevation. But short of having that information, this is the best we have to work with the way the reg is written right now.
Yeah, because there's, there's parts of the Northwest part of town up where I live, where they have four sump pumps. And that house was built in the fifties. And they put them in after the fact. So I, I understand what we're talking about, but we have, there's got to be a little bit of flexibility on it. And I, you know, I mean, it's one of those things, the homeowner's going to take that, that brunt of it, you know, if it happens, the water come up. But this year, it's been higher than it has.
Yeah, it's, it's just higher than it ever has. And, and if I, if I'm correct, you're right, so the J and J development up on Fourteenth, now all his lots have, the highest elevation of the finished floor is already marked on the plans.
That is correct. That subdivision has the lowest finished floor.
Last year, now this year, I go up there and dig a basement. So now you're telling me if I go, because if that's marked on the plan, I can be at that depth.
You still, you, if you would encounter groundwater, you still should be two feet above it for your lowest finished floor. If you find groundwater is higher, just for the benefit of the future homeowner and the downstream properties, the, the groundwater pump to the surface is a source of complaints for the city all the way up and down. The, the ditches never dry up because there's groundwater in them whether it's raining or not.
But, but if that's marked on the plan, if I'm correct, you're allowed to, I could dig right to the water level then.
Right, we, we could, but I hope that you would keep that in mind. And I, I think we should probably, when we redo our subdivision ordinance, clarify it so that it isn't a loophole like that, that because that's a disservice to the.
You know, we have this and then we had an ordinance that we didn't, you know, that we did nothing with until this year. You know, so it's just, it's just a moving target and it's, and it's, I mean, and this isn't the only lot has, has issues. I mean, there's other lots that, that are going to have issues and have had issues, had to change their plan.
Right, we, we know, we've got roads that are failing because of the high groundwater and their accommodations weren't made in the road design for those conditions. And we have downstream property owners that are really upset that we're allowing it because they have water running in their backyard from their upstream neighbors all the time. But ultimately, it's a community decision of whether we allow this or not. There are reasons that we would have this requirement. And it's, it's, you know, it shortens the lifespan of the infrastructure, the roads. Not the curb and gutter so much. Concrete handles it better than asphalt. But also, you know, for the homeowner that has a sump that's half-full of water, the rainstorm that causes that sump to overflow is a smaller event than the homeowner that has the full volume of an empty sump.
If, if you put this instead of two-foot, eighteen inches above a high watermark, there's going to, there won't be water in the sump basket until that level goes up. Because the, the pipe comes in at, at the top of the sump pump, not at the bottom. So the only water that can come in is through the drain tile. So, so just because the pit is a foot and a half lower than the drain tile, no water's going to go in there unless somebody goes down there and drills holes in it. And, and we don't use perforated sump baskets here. We use solid pump baskets, so.
Some of them are perforated. Yes, Councilman Danforth?
How do we answer to the next person that doesn't want to put a two-foot?
Right, well, if you give the variance, are you going to give everybody the variance?
Well, that's my question, is.
Or are you just going to give this one the variance? If you're only going to give the one variance, you should find a unique situation here. We do have a variance criteria that you'd go by that, if, if you're thinking of giving everybody a variance, it's time to change the rule. If you think there's something different about this lot that makes it unique and, and it isn't necessarily that you're going to let everybody do this, just this one because this lot's special and unique, you should find whatever it is and state that for the record, that you see this is different because whatever.
Well, I know more than in our, my area that I live in, I know there's a number of homes that have been developed over time that have, there's certainly driveways that are, are steeper than I would want to live in. But, and I think, Dale, that's what you're, you're saying, is that.
Yeah, and, and it's an abnormal year. I mean, if, if it was, if we didn't have all the rain and everything, all the snow and everything we had, would this lot be an issue? Would I be here? No, because the ground level, you know, the groundwater would be down probably another foot and a half. Who, who knows?
Right.
Because the house they built next door, I built, I built a year ago and that pump never ran until this year.
Well, but the, the challenge I have, and, and I won't be on the council when this happens, is what happens when the next person comes in, we don't, in whatever year it is, could be a dry year, could be a wet year, that comes in and wants that variance, that same variance. There's a cost associated as well to, to not have it go as deep either. So it may be minor, but there, there's, there are still reasons why people may want that. And I'm not sure how, if I'm sitting on this side of the desk, how I'm going to be able to answer to that unless we make a change to the requirement.
Right, and, and here's the thing. I have not ever authorized the staff to administratively grant variances. The variances are to be granted either by the Board of Adjustment, the Plan Commission, or the City Council. And so that takes the heat off of the staff for having to, you know, get pressure from developers. This, this belongs in your lap. These are your ordinances. Here's some guidance on when variances should be granted. Standards for variances, this comes right from our zoning code. In granting a variance, you shall ascertain that the following criteria are met. Variances shall be granted only where special circumstances or conditions fully described in the finding of the board do not apply generally in the district. So this spot is different from everyone else. Variances shall not be granted to allow a use, well, this isn't a use. For reasons fully set forth in the findings of the board, the aforesaid circumstances or conditions are such that the strict application of the provisions would deprive the applicant of any reasonable use of his land. Mere loss in value shall not justify a variance. There must be a deprivation of beneficial use of the land. So you could not build a house on this lot without this variance because this lot is designed for a house and it can't be used for that purpose unless you grant the variance. Any variance granted under the provisions shall be the minimum adjustment necessary for reasonable use of the land. And the granting of any variances in harmony with the general purposes and intent of the title will not be injurious to the neighborhood, detrimental to the public welfare, or in conflict with the comprehensive plan for development. So I, I would struggle with that just because I, I don't think that there's anything unique about this particular lot. I, I can't deny that the staff has been pressured to grant variances administratively in the past. I don't condone that. I don't want them to have that pressure. I don't think they like that pressure. Variances should be granted by the Board of Adjustment, the Plan Commission, or the council. And this is why, the, the council writes these rules. So if you think we should change them, we can go through that process. Councilwoman Roby?
Did this go to the Board of Adjustments?
No, he just asked, and it, the next meeting was City Council. It says in our subdivision code that the Plan Commission and/or the council can grant a variance to the subdivision ordinance. And this is a subdivision ordinance requirement. Councilwoman Villahauer?
Did you make reference a little while ago, Mayor, that we are looking at revising or rewriting some of these subdivision ordinances?
We're trying to clear up the discrepancies and the confusion and that sort of thing. This isn't one of the areas necessarily. The, the only thing that I think there is in leeway in this is that it says normal groundwater elevation. And we don't know what that is. We're not requiring developers to take water levels throughout time in hot, in dry years and wet years. They, you know, they take a snapshot. So it might be high, it might be low. We don't know. But it's a, it's a baseline level. And a future homeowner would probably appreciate following this because I have people that are, have complained that they can't go on vacation. If the power goes out, there are basement floods because their sump pumps are running constantly. And if we get a rainstorm, if you have a sump pump that's running when it's not raining, that means your sump is partially full of water. And then if there's a rainstorm and the water soaks into the ground, it's got no capacity. It's going to come up in the basement. So that's what people deal with. And I'm sure you've all had constituents come talk to you in frustration. There's not a lot we can do about that because it is generally an issue of a private property owner. It's not something we can fix.
So, so you're saying that any of the year prior to this year, when I built the last thirty years, this ordinance was on the books?
And it has been enforced.
No, it hasn't been enforced. No.
It, it has. No, I, I've been on the staff where people come up yelling at the staff for enforcing it.
I can bring twenty other builders to this meeting and tell you that it was not enforced. That it was not.
Well, I'm.
Because realize, so if I dig it today, I can go a foot or ten inches deeper than I could a week ago. So then what happens when it rains in a week from now?
Okay, your home, your person that's buying this house, how do they feel about having a sump pump that runs all the time?
Ninety percent of the people in town, their sump pumps are on. So it's not, it's, it's an issue everywhere.
Okay, and I, I, I would leave that to the council to decide if they think that that's fine for our community to have that.
I just struggled with the way it was, it was enforced prior to this year. Because it, it, it was never, and, I mean, it was, it was never, I always had to keep the footings had to be out of the water. And I wish I had pictures. I mean, I can show you, I, I could show you a hundred houses I did that we went at, at the water level.
Yeah, I, I don't know on that, but, Councilwoman Villahauer?
Mr. Heilmann, okay, I'm, I'm not going to argue with you as far, I mean, you know your business. And so what, in your opinion, what has been enforced or not been enforced, I'm, I'm not going to debate that. But knowing that this is now an issue that we are going to be looking more closely at, what will that mean to you and other developers out there going forward? I mean, will that be adding a, a lot of extra cost or expense to a homeowner? I guess, can, can explain what, what this means going forward if you know it's something that is being looked at more closely now.
It's basically going to be, you're going to have subdivisions that you're only going to be able to do slab-on-grades. You're not going to be able to do basements. You know, like this year, I mean, the water level's up. I mean, that's why it's just a, it's a, it's a floating number. I mean, it's different every year. It's, it's not something that's, that stays constant. You know, if, if, if a person have, had a history of the land and knew the water level was at this point on a, on a normal year and we go a foot above that or two foot above that, well, then we'd have something to base it off of. Now we're just basing it off of how much rain, how much snow we had in the spring, you know, so. But yeah, as far as a burden to the homeowner, yeah. This homeowner, if, if, you know, that six inches means a, a lot to, to this, it basically gets me on the border. He spent forty-five thousand dollars for a lot and if I don't get this, he, he might have a lot that he can't build on because he doesn't want a slab-on-grade. He wants a basement, so.
Councilman Albertson?
Which may in fact make it unique to the situation, and if, if that's the case, you know, I don't know if that's.
Well, it goes to the normal ground level. I mean.
What's unique?
What is normal?
I, I'm not following. What, what makes it unique?
Well, one of the things you said is it had to be unique in order to allow that.
Something about this particular lot?
Right.
That makes the lot unique and different from the other lots in town?
That's what I'm saying. It might make it.
What would make it?
Make this situation, the fact that Dale says that you may not be able to build a basement in it if you don't have this extra six inches on.
I think that's true of all the houses in that neighborhood.
I don't know.
Well, I had a person call me when their basement was being excavated not far from here and tell me that a water main had broken. The water was rushing into the pit so fast. And I, you know, it was just the groundwater. And that was several years ago in a really dry period. It's just a high groundwater level. We've got issues related to that. And the, you know, the, the public infrastructure, I can tell you with a straight face, it's harmful to the public infrastructure to have everyone pumping groundwater twenty-four-seven. It's a different story if that's collecting the water that seeps into the ground from a rain event and keeps the foundation dry during wet periods. But to have it constantly taking on groundwater is another situation. Now, you're saying it won't, at least today it won't, with water levels like they were ten days ago, maybe. We don't know because it fluctuates, but.
So what you're saying, this ordinance has been on the books for, forever. So how many houses in town pump right now?
I, I, I don't know if it's been on the books forever. I know this particular ordinance has been on the books since two thousand and ten. And prior to that, I don't remember where it was, but it was in the ordinance somewhere, I think. I don't really know.
And it was Ken that told me it's been on the books.
Mayor, I built my house in two thousand and one and Daley was on the books then because I ran into the same.
So I'm saying.
I ran into the same problem. And when they went to dig my basement, they called and said, oops, we got water.
But did the inspector come up and say, oh, you got to be a foot below that water?
I was two feet. It was two feet. And so I had the choice of either waiting, this is where you're coming from. I had the choice of either waiting till a dry year to build or adhering to it, and then I had to bring Phil in.
What did you do?
Which is.
Which was expensive.
What did you do?
Brought Phil in. I, I didn't want to build or didn't want to not build. So I built to the two-foot, and that was in two thousand and one.
Well, but what is kind of surprising is this, this is the first time I've, I've ever encountered this ordinance. Or it, it's ever been brought up to me was this spring, and I've been here thirty years, so.
The only other thing I would mention, guys, is, is, and I don't know how long it's been. It's maybe been within the last year and a half to two and a half years. But up in the Conrady addition, up on the Seventeenth Street area, somewhere up in there, do you guys recall all the concerns and the, and the problems that those people had with the sump pumps running to the backyards and it's always wet and flowing and going in there? And so we ended up working out, I believe we worked out something with them to put an underground pipe system in there to get it out. Didn't we do that?
I don't think that worked out, but they wanted that.
That's what they wanted. I think some of them did do it to get it back. But that was a huge fiasco, guys, because everybody, whoever's upstream is, is the happy ones. Because, but if it's, there ain't kind of a hill there, the ones on the downhill side of that, it's, it's a problem. And that's what we had up in that Conrady addition. And I still, I don't know, I know that. And I still, I don't know, I know that went on for quite a long time, and I don't know, uh, now if that's been resolved or if they just gave up on the issue, but, uh, there were a lot of very, very unhappy people up there.
Councilwoman Manti?
I just have a, just a broad question for whoever wants to answer it, and it's not trying to be a smart aleck or anything like that, but if we have a situation where we're faced with, I mean, I don't disagree with everything because I can't even walk to church without going through knee-high water. No, I'm just kidding, it's not knee-high, but across that intersection. Um, but if we run into a situation where a person buys a lot and in, we're in a, because we could go in a ten-year wet cycle, you know, of having high wa- groundwater, so their option is either a basement or slab-on-grade or bringing in fill, what do we do? I mean, I, I, you know, if I'm the guy with the lot sitting there saying, you know, I don't want a slab, um, I want a basement, but I don't want water, but it, it is, I mean, I think that this is a, feels like a no-win to me a little bit in the sense that, uh, you know, like I said, I'm, I'm asking the question just from the perspective of how long are we going to go where people are going to open up the ground and say, oops, the water is higher than it has been.
Well, it, it would make them do the investigation before they buy the lot, for sure, if they want a basement. If they're okay with a slab-on-grade, then they're going to be fine. And it is really, is, which is more important? Is it more important to allow individuals to do whatever they want? Or is it more important to watch out for the general good for the whole community? Because the future buyers are probably the ones dealing with this. It won't be Mr. Heilmann. He'll be done and gone, and the, the next homeowner, you know, probably have a brand-new system, it'll be fine. And then the second one will have a wet basement. And we'll have wet yard whenever the groundwater is high enough. And, and maybe that will be periodic, maybe it'll be all the time, I don't know. This is why we have this rule, and if, if you think it's inappropriate, we can take it out. And I will support that if that's what the Council desires. It's, you are here to represent the people, but I will tell you, there's a detriment to the public welfare in allowing for this to happen because the infrastructure fails sooner when we have groundwater being pumped to the surface and constantly wet because people wanted a basement in an area with shallow groundwater. And is that what we want as a community? To ensure that people can do whatever they want, even if it sometimes doesn't make sense? Or do we want to have some sort of standard that protects the infrastructure and protects the neighbors and protects the homeowner themselves and the future homeowners? It, that's, that's the issue. This, and this is, this debate goes back and forth in Watertown, and, because we have shallow groundwater all over town. Councilman Danforth?
I'm going to pose this question to Heath. We're not the only community that has groundwater issues. I mean, you go to Brookings, you go to a number of different communities that you've just got shallow groundwater. It's the way it is. And there's a lot of places that it doesn't matter how wet the spring or the, the fall is, uh, there's just groundwater there. Is the two-foot, is it, is it a typical, um, dimension or requirement in, in other areas that would see the, the types of groundwater issues that we have? And then, and I guess the second question in my mind is, is, were you, earlier, were you, were you questioning the, the two-feet? Or that maybe it should be less? I wasn't sure you, the way you had talked, I wasn't really sure what you were actually referring to there.
No, that's a good question. Councilman Danforth, Madam Mayor, the, uh, so when I posed that as a question, I meant just for discussion purposes, if we as a community wanted to alter that two-feet, just as the mayor is, is indicated, you know, that is a governing body decision. I, I wouldn't necessarily recommend that. Uh, I do like the two-foot rule based on the issues that Watertown, that, that I have observed Watertown faces in our neighborhoods with sump pump flows that continue to compromise our infrastructure, our, our street paving. I think our street superintendent could, could attest to that as well. Um, so it wasn't necessarily me questioning it, it was just opening that up as a point of discussion that the Council could consider that modification to eighteen inches or whatever number we feel is appropriate for our community. Um, as far as other communities go, I, it really is a, a mixed bag of what they do. Some will require what's called a dig inspection. So, when the, when the basement is dug, before the foundation is poured, the building inspectors will do a dig inspection with the comb builder or the contractor and observe any presence of groundwater or lack thereof, and then move forward accordingly. Um, some communities may stipulate a depth, uh, or a height above groundwater elevation like we do. Um, and then, after the matter, retroactively, I guess, what some communities are faced with, if they don't regul- regulate this upfront, uh, what I have observed in other communities is at the expense of the general public, those communities have had to go on, go back in and put in regional dewatering wells, uh, because the groundwater elevation has become so intrusive to the, the built-out subdivision, and all the homeowners were dealing with so many issues with those sump flows, that the city put in public infrastructure, a groundwater, uh, dewatering well, that they would then manage, uh, you know, become part of the storm sewer system essentially for the streets department to manage that pump, make sure it continues to function, and help draw that groundwater down so all the individual homes don't have to keep pumping water. So that, that obviously comes at an expense to the taxpayers to retroactively go in with some infrastructure like that. But that does happen in, in communities when you don't look at it from a proactive standpoint, and you're coming in reactively to try to correct situations. Uh, I do know the city of Sioux Falls has gone to the length of requiring sump drain collection systems in, in their residential neighborhoods. So, uh, in neighborhoods where they know there's groundwater presence, there's going to be an issue with sump pumping and the need for sump pumps, uh, flows, they require a sump pump collection system to be installed. So every individual lot can tie into that sump collection system. And what that does is help alleviate the saturated lawns, the moss out on the driveways and the curb and gutter. Um, it doesn't eliminate the need for the pumping, but it does give a place for the flows to go. So, th- there's options like that, uh, when you look at it reactively to try to figure out how to address the situation, or when you're looking at it proactively to try to address the situation. And I, I think communities really do vary on what they require and how they administer this, this effect of groundwater.
If you enforce this uniformly, you don't have groundwater being pumped to the surface though, because the sumps are, um, shallower than the groundwater. And the sumps would only run when there's a rainfall event and waters coming into the foundation drains. And I, I know this is a problem in Sioux Falls. We, we experienced the problem with sump pumps discharging to the sanitary sewer this spring, and we had everybody on water rationing, um, at the lake because our sewer system was not keeping up. And I saw that Sioux Falls had that same situation. They were begging people to remove their sump discharge pipes from the sanitary sewer because they were having capacity problems in the sanitary sewer. You would not have those problems if you followed the twenty-four-inch rule. And, and so it's really, we, it's a public infrastructure, private benefit issue. Yes, Councilman Robey?
Heath, as a, somebody who lives on a street that pumps all the time, as somebody who's wiped out on the moss in the gutter, um, and who's had it passed on to me and I passed it on to somebody else, I would have welcomed a collection system, and I would have welcomed the assessment to get that done. Because I've watched the street erode, as I said, we have known people that have fallen down, including myself, that the problem is not going to go away. Second point I'm going to make is, we, I, I don't know how this is going to come out here, but why do we develop on all this land that, that's so wet? Well, that's Watertown. I mean, we can't avoid, that's, that's our area, but maybe we, maybe, I don't know, Brookings is, I think, limiting development in some areas because it's just too darn wet to develop. But we, we seem to do all our development on wet lands. Is it just, we're never going to get away from that? And, and, uh, any advice on that?
Great, uh, great comments. Um, you know, as far as any advice goes, at the time of subdivision review, um, you know, I think there are certain situations where the, the community, the city, through our regulations, could question whether it's appropriate to develop a certain area. You know, as far as writing that into the ordinances, a lot of times it would come down to a per-case basis of reviewing the circumstances. What are the soil conditions? What are the, what are the surface water conditions? What are the groundwater conditions? Uh, a lot of that, uh, would have to be regulated, I think, on a, a per-circumstance or a per-case review. But it's absolutely something that, uh, I, I don't think's out of the realm of being, uh, of, of what the governing body would want to have us look at and regulate and, and, you know, raise attention to the red flags that are out there for certain subdivisions in certain areas of town.
That is written into our ordinance. It's just extraordinarily hard for us to tell a developer, we don't think the land you own is appropriate for this type of development. I don't, can't even picture us doing that unless it's a, you know, designated wetland or something like that. Um, but in this part of the country where we have tornadoes, people have a sense that they must have a basement. That's the only safe way to build a house. But now we're seeing slab houses with safe rooms in the center, which are reinforced concrete and no windows, and, and so people have a place to go if there is a tornado. That's why you're seeing that, I think. Someone over here, Councilman Lalum?
Dale, if you'd have came in this week, would we have the same issue as we did last week with this water table? If you were digging the hole this week versus?
He still needs six inches.
Yeah, I, I, I would still need six inches.
Okay.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
If I could follow up on that, just to try to bring this particular case maybe to a close, um, Dale, do you know, and I apologize, we haven't been able to talk yet today on this since the groundwater elevation did drop quite a bit over the last week, but do you know that six inches, what kind of an effect that has on the driveway slope? Or otherwise, what effect it has on the structure in relation to the other structures in the neighborhood?
Um, even, even digging, even digging it six inches above the water today, we're still going to be higher than both houses around us. We're going to be probably, I didn't, I didn't shoot foundation heights, but all of eighteen inches higher. So the house I built a year ago is eighteen to two feet, two feet lower than this house is going to be, and that house had no water in it until the water level went up now. So you go back to the normal water level, what's, what's normal? I mean, that's in the ordinance, so.
And then as far as the driveway slope, you, if-
You know, because we had thought, we thought, or, I think that's in the ordinance too. Is, is it thirteen percent? Which is two-foot eight off a top of curb?
That's one of the standard engineering design standards that we don't formally have adopted, but it is a, I've seen it standardly applied at a thirteen percent driveway slope max.
Yeah.
Well, the driveway will be at least twenty-five feet because that's the set, minimum setback.
We're talking height.
And half a foot in twenty-five feet is two percent. So, if your slope was designed at eleven percent, which it probably wasn't, then you'd be up to that thirteen percent max. But you're probably, most people are at one to two percent, and that's, um, you know, maybe five percent on a steep lot.
Yeah, I don't know what, yeah, I don't know what that is. I mean, our, the normal we try to go is two-foot eight from top of curb is what, is what we've always went by.
That two-foot eight is what puts you a foot and a half above the groundwater elevation right now?
Um, no, I, no, the driveway's going to be, uh, probably a, a foot steeper than that, three-foot six.
That's eight percent, so, um, eight percent plus another two percent, so it'd be a ten percent slope instead of an eight percent slope on your driveway.
I mean, I, I don't know, yeah.
Councilman Bueller?
Hi, Dale. Um, the neighbors, you said, the adjacent places are lower already, the elevation, so-
Yes, yep.
Have, have they been pumping?
Um, yes, yeah, they are.
Are they?
Um, the one next door, the one I did last, um, his, his ain't running very much at all, but the ones we did, uh, five years ago, they're pumping more, just because the ground level has, the water level has come up. And like I said before, we, I mean, when we dug them, the footings weren't buried in water. You know, it's just the water level has come up, you know?
What would, Dale, if you couldn't do this, what would be your next step?
Uh, the homeowner would have to possibly get a different lot.
Or a different house design?
Yeah, and, and they don't want a slab. I mean, they want, they're building in a small house, um, so if they do a, a slab-on-grade, they need to build a bigger house, you know, so that costs more to do. They want to build a twelve-hundred square foot house and have up, up, up and down finish to get the square footage they need.
But the whole issue would be the slope of the driveway, that's the issue.
That's the biggest issue, and, and like I said, I've already changed the height of the exterior walls, the, the foundation walls is six foot instead of eight, so we're doing what's called a raised ranch. I've already adjusted for that already. So his house is going to look a little bit out of place in the neighborhood the way it is by doing that. Um, but I think, but he's, he's okay with that.
And I'm going to ask you a dumb question here. You can't lower the grade on that garage, so it'd be a step up, is that even feasible?
I, I, I could, but then he's going to have eight steps or nine steps coming from his garage into his house. So it's, yeah, I mean, wherever you, you do it one way, it's just a reaction.
What would he have if we do this?
If we do this, he would have, uh, the normal is five steps. He would have, he would have six steps going into his house.
So you'd add a couple, three steps to it?
Yeah, but it's, it's more the slope of the driveway than anything, keeping that as level as we possibly can. Yep. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Councilman Danforth?
Well-
I'll get you next.
It's kind of a booger, um, because it goes right back to what normal is, what, and that, that's the challenge, but, um, and I understand that, that we're in a high-water, groundwater timeframe, but I do know that, from my standpoint, I know the problems that we have seen in the past and continue to, to live with and see with, with the sump pump scenario, and to aggravate that, I think, would be wrong. I also have seen the issues and heard a lot of complaints from people that, that have had these, uh, sump pump issues, and I'm not sure how I would, I would answer to them, but really, the, the last thing is, is how do we answer to the next person? I would really struggle with that. I think we either need to change the rule or we have to abide by it. Like, and I don't see anything, uh, I, I, I think if we get into it and say that house design is a special and justifiable scenario, we're really in trouble. I think we're going to have a, a lot of problems with a lot of our ordinances if that's the case, so. Hate to say it, but I, I, in lieu of not having definitive definition of what average groundwater height is, I think we need to stay with what our plan is.
Councilman Bueller, did you want to add something? All right. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion. Oh, did you want to say something?
I think what you were starting to talk to Dale about some of the, um, like the water went down ten inches now, and were you kind of going towards the idea of, can we see if it keeps going down before we do this variance? Is that kind of where you were going, or? I don't know.
No, uh, thanks for that, uh, Councilwoman Manti. What, uh, what I was alluding to was just trying to grasp, uh, how the effect has, uh, helped him or aided him in accomplishing what he's trying to do. You know, realizing that it's dropped ten inches, you know, I was wondering, trying to get at is whether he can now accomplish what it was he was trying to do, um, while maybe not being exactly how he had laid it out or wanted to see it laid out. Uh, maybe it's a lot closer now than where we were a week ago.
Yeah, it is.
But that's what those questions were, were headed towards.
I guess that's why I was feeling like you were talking about, and, and what would it be next week?
Well, yeah, exactly. And, and let's say I, I dig the basement Monday and it rains three inches on Tuesday, do I have to raise the footings up then? Because now the groundwater, water went up ten inches, you know?
It is a booger.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's just-
We have to have something to start with, and, I mean, the homeowner should be informed of the potential.
And my, and my, my final comment would be just basically that, that we haven't enforced this, and I haven't heard of it until this year. That's one of my defenses, and it's a wet year. And now this comes upon us, and, and I just, I mean, that's my, my biggest stepping stone right there. If, if I was doing this for the last thirty years, I would have went to that homeowner and said, hey, I probably wouldn't buy that lot. It's, it's, it's pretty wet, you're probably going to end up with a, with a driveway steeper just because I know we have to do the two-foot. But I didn't know that until now.
Councilwoman Manti?
I was just wondering if, because we did just get done with a long dry, dry cycle. Is it possible that it has been being enforced, but we did, it wasn't a problem because you could get down the two feet?
Yeah, we're still wet. I mean, we were wet last year, all year, yeah.
All right, I'm going to look for action. We have a motion to approve the variance. So a vote in favor would grant the variance. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That, that's approving the variance. All opposed, signify by saying nay.
Nay.
Roll call vote. Okay, roll call. Albertson?
No.
Bueller? Danforth?
No.
Lalum?
Yes.
Manti?
Yes.
Roby? Solom?
Yes.
Thorson is absent. Philhauer?
No.
And Y?
No.
Okay. Five, no. Motion failed. Five to four. All right.
Thank you.
Councilman Lalum? Pardon me?
I need to go. I have a, I have a serious softball game I got to get to here, the, the coach. So, that's what I'm leaving for, just FYI for the general public.
All right. For the record, Councilman Lalum had to leave. Item, item number eleven is authorization to adjust Kirk Ellis's pay upon his promotion to police captain to grade seven, step seven, in exception to section eleven point zero nine of the personnel policy, pay upon promotion. I'll look for a motion, second for approval. Move by Manti, second by Bueller. And I see we have Police Chief Lee McPeak here to explain this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Luckily, in my position, I haven't had to appoint a captain in quite a while. And now that I had two retirements, I've had to make two promotions. So in the process, I found out that our city policy kind of contradicts itself just a little bit. If you look at section eleven oh six, it says a new employee in an exempt position, which a captain is, should ordinarily be compensated a rate of a pay between a minimum of step one and seven. So I took that to mean that I could assign that captain somewhere between step one and seven. When I conferred with Matt and Kristen, they both said that it's for a new employee. So I could hire a new employee that hasn't worked for the city for the last fifteen years and pay him a step seven. But because these guys have worked for me for fifteen years, one of them I can't put at a step seven. It's a three and a half percent increase according to a different section, which says eleven oh nine, pay upon promotion. So I think that's kind of a, I don't think that was the true intent of that ordinance, I wouldn't think. You know, be able to pay somebody from the outside more than somebody that's put fifteen years of their life working in the police department. So I asked Kristen to put this on the agenda for approval. She said council can approve that he be paid at step seven of that grade. Is that about correct?
That's correct. And if this passes, I think we have a change in the personnel policy manual coming.
That will be coming up.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Pretty self-explanatory. All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is authorization for the engineering department to advertise for bids for the HESCO basket removal project. I'll look for a motion, second for approval. Move by Philhauer. Second by Y. And Heath, please explain this.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This brings us back to our, our temporary flood control, flood fighting measures that we installed here a couple of months back now already. Um, but as you recall, we went into an agreement with the Corps of Engineers, who covered the expense in full to install what are called HESCO baskets. That's the, the wire structures filled with sand that created those temporary berms, uh, up and down along the, uh, the river, where we knew that, uh, they needed to be installed where permanent measures weren't in place. In that agreement with the Corps of Engineers, it is the city's responsibility at, at our expense to remove, uh, that infrastructure. Given the sheer amount of, of, uh, labor that's going to be involved with that, I've been in communications with, uh, Mr. Bannan, the street superintendent, their forces and their schedules at the present time. Don't fare well for them to do that work in-house. I think from years past, our experience has been to contract this work out as well. And so that's exactly where Rob and I have landed, to propose that we bid this work out. I would note, at this point, I don't have a rough estimate on what that cost might be. I apologize, I did not get numbers put together ahead of this meeting. But I also wanted to note and could defer to Kristen, but this would qualify for some of the reimbursements that we're receiving from our flood, uh, flood impact reimbursements that were, that we get, uh, through the state, from the federal level down, channel through the state. And, you know, I'd entertain any questions or discussion on the matter. Rob's here as well, if we have any specific questions of him.
All right, thank you. Councilman Philhauer?
Do we have a sense, Heath or Kristen, what, because we're, how, how much have we expended, uh, for flood control measures, uh, up to now? I mean, this can be a sizable amount, isn't it? I, I think my ultimate question is, how much of that or what percent are we looking at reimbursement from either state or federal government on, on these expenditures?
I don't have the exact number off the top of my head. I can bring that to the next meeting. But if it is declared, and I haven't quite heard, but I think it is going to be, FEMA reimburses up to eighty percent of the covered cost that they agreed to. The thing that's a little bit different is you have to remember that if the employee is working their normal scheduled hours, none of that is reimbursed by FEMA. It's only the overtime cost. So if the street department was working for flood preparation, but it was their normal eight to five, we don't see any of that, um, reimbursed, it's for overtime. But we will see some for the equipment and then some of the materials. And I think too, we did contact FEMA, or we actually talked to the state and asked if removal of the HESCO baskets would be, um, able to be turned in, and they did say it would be, so.
Only if done outside of normal working hours by our staff or paid to a contractor.
Exactly, yep.
And, Madam Mayor, if I could follow up on that as well. I know that, uh, Kristen and, and Rob and the, uh, Cottington County Emergency Manager were all in a meeting recently with FEMA. And you've probably heard, uh, here a couple, few weeks back, where FEMA was making the rounds through South Dakota communities, doing some, uh, final assessments of flood damages. This was one of the questions that specifically came up, as FEMA requested a copy of our agreement with the Corps of Engineers that put this responsibility on us, which was evidence of them wanting proof that we're financially obligated to do this and would presumably then follow up with reimbursement accordingly.
Thank you. Councilman Danforth?
Two questions. Um, are, are the HESCO baskets a one-time-use thing? Use them and then they're thrown away, or are they saved, or what?
They are, uh, we're required to send them back to the Corps of Engineers. Now, my understanding, what they do with them is, is yes, they try to clean them, prep them for future use. I, I would sug, I would only speculate that the condition that they come back in at times requires them to get sent back to HESCO and completely rebuilt or, uh, discarded that way.
So, and I know we can't live with these things forever, but there's still so much water in this area. What would happen if we got a three-inch rain or a five-inch rain that we've seen? What would happen if it was upstream from us? Are we still in a situation where something like that type of event would create the need to re-sandbag? Where, where are we at the point at which?
It's possible, but the fact that now we have thawed ground that's accepting water. If it's saturated, it isn't, but, uh, for the most part, water can soak in when it rains now. So it, it would require a much more intense and widespread rainfall event to create flooding now than it did when we had snow and frozen ground. But we could have a flood. There's, there's never a guarantee that we won't.
Also along those lines, Madam Mayor, that is something that the Corps of Engineers, uh, would continue to, you know, if they saw in the forecast, there were some, uh, flood, potential flood impacts due to a pending storm, just like they did, uh, in the spring thaw, they would be monitoring that, uh, between them and the National Weather Service, reaching out to the city, um, helping us, uh, move forward accordingly, planning and preparing accordingly for those, uh, to prevent those flood measures, uh, to help install those flood measures again. You'd hate to see that kind of rework, but in worst-case scenario, I would presume that's how that would unfold.
Yep. Any other questions? Oh, Councilman Philhauer?
There's got to be some kind of timetable. I mean, as far as expenditures incurred before versus after some date, I mean, do we have a date out there yet? Uh, or is it just still, so you're not aware of any? I mean, let, let's say to Mike's point, we, we decide to leave them set there for six months or a year, whatever. I mean, there, there's got to be some, at some point where, where those will not be a reimbursable expense any longer. But we don't know what that, that date is at this point yet.
I am not sure what that date is. As of right now, I believe the, with what is happening throughout the state, I mean, I think there's still a lot of stuff happening with the flood. So I don't know that date, but that's something I could talk to the state about too, so.
Any other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item number thirteen is authorization to reject the bid for the two thousand nineteen miscellaneous concrete improvements, project number nineteen oh six. Okay, notice this is negative, this is reject the bid. So look for a motion to reject. Move by Bueller, second by Manti. And I'll let Heath tell us about this one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This, uh, this is a proposal to reject the bid for this. What happened is here on May twenty-eighth, we received one bid for the two thousand nineteen miscellaneous concrete improvements project. What this project generally entails is, uh, just that miscellaneous concrete repairs throughout town, primarily focused on curb and gutter, uh, and valley gutters. We've got a, a few intersections with some, uh, valley gutters that are broke up, that aren't conveying flow like they should, or, or in some cases are too steep and, uh, aren't allowing traffic to traverse through them very, very well. And then the curb and gutter side of things, we've got curb that's broke up, panels that have settled, creating bird baths out in front of residents and things of that nature, preventing sump pump flows from flowing efficiently down the curb line. So we try to realign those curb sections, repair them accordingly. That's primarily what this project would do. The budget that we had been working within, uh, was up to a hundred thousand dollars. And this bid came in at a hundred, a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Now, short of asking for thirty more grand, what we decided to do, and again, in communication with the street superintendent and the engineering office, we were proposing to reject this bid and then move forward with a quote project, uh, to spend up to fifty thousand dollars towards these measures. So we feel that we can kind of reprioritize, uh, find the highest priorities on that list that we had slated and get that done under a quote project for up to fifty grand, which puts us within our quote regulations of the state statute. And, uh, move forward accordingly in that manner, if that so pleases the council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action again. This is a negative motion to reject the bid. All those in favor of rejecting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries. Item fourteen is authorization to award the bid for the park and rec improvements project number nineteen oh nine to Dunick, Inc., in the amount of three hundred thirty thousand, eight hundred eighty-four dollars, eighty-five cents. Look for a motion, second for approval. Move by Philhauer. Second by Albertson. And Heath, please tell us about this one.
Somebody told me before the meeting this was a short agenda, but I'm not feeling that right now. So this, this, this is one of our, one of our last few projects to be, uh, have the award bid, uh, the bid award presented to the council. This is for the, uh, park and rec improvements, which included two targeted city park areas. We want to do some paving improvements at City Park, along with Jackson Park. And, uh, Park Superintendent is here tonight to talk on behalf of this project as well. We did receive only one bid in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand dollars, roughly, almost three hundred and thirty-one thousand. It was a little higher than the engineer's estimate. Now, if you recall, uh, the budget for this work was four hundred and five thousand dollars. And we earmarked a hundred thousand of that for other project overruns on the street side of our CIP for this year, which brought our working budget for this project down to three hundred and five thousand. So as you'll, you'll see in the request for council action, we're about twenty-five thousand dollar over budget on this project. But that's a number that, uh, between myself, the park superintendent and, uh, and, uh, finance officer, we were comfortable in proceeding with. I do have some pictures I could bring up of the dilapidated areas that are going to be addressed with this work. This is a view of, uh, go ahead, Jay, I want you to talk to us if you could.
This would be a view of coming into, uh, Jackson Park from the, uh, from the south entrance, uh, near the, uh, golf course maintenance building. You come in there and, uh, actually, this is barricaded off right now. There's no use going on in there and it's shot.
This is also in Jackson Park, I believe.
Yes, this is another shot from Jackson Park. And you know, Jackson Park, that area, it's a very nice shoreline area. There's a lot of recreation, picnicking, fishing, that type of thing. We do have the accessible fishing pier there that has not been installed yet this spring. Because of the road conditions, we kind of sunk out of sight when we tried to get in there. So, uh, we've held off with that and this one's in very bad shape.
Then a couple pictures from City Park. Here's, uh, the access to City Park.
Yes, that would be the access road coming into the boat ramp parking at City Park. And that has definitely, uh, deteriorated the spring already with the wet conditions that we've had. It's, it's gotten much worse. And that's one of the reasons we had a four hundred and five thousand dollar project. But we did reduce the scope of work at City Park from what we had originally intended. And it would be this area and then a little farther into the, uh, parking lot. As you can see, that's, uh, basically where the boat ramp parking lot is located. And we just really like to, there's a lot of alligator cracking going on in there. And we would really like to, uh, see this repaired so we can, much of the remainder of the parking area is in relatively good shape. So if we could get this repaired, I think we could hold, hold that road condition for some time to come.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions from the council or comments? Oh, Councilman Philhauer?
Jay, you, you confused me with your last comment relative to the parking lot by the boat ramp. I mean, I, I agree, I drove, I was out there last night. The, the road is in terrible shape coming in off, off South Lake Drive. But as far as the parking lot itself, did, I mean, are, are we looking at the entire parking lot being?
No, this would be the area, if you know where the restroom, uh, sits out there, this would be to the east of that restroom. The L that goes off to the south, uh, that is in relatively good condition, so we aren't doing anything there. It's just right in that general area where the, uh, where the boat ramp parking, boat parking would be occurring.
So, so using this, so, so this, this area in its entirety, we, we would be looking at?
No. No, it would be just the entrance road coming in and then kind of the, uh, interior of that boat ramp parking lot.
Okay. If, if Colin could expand a little bit, he helped, uh, put together the specifications for this, to know exactly what's going on within that highlighted area for Councilman Philhauer.
Thanks, Heath. Uh, just to kind of expand on what he was saying is, uh, so we are doing a full dig out and a portion, kind of what he was describing. And then we're, we're doing an overlay on the area that you saw in your packet. We're trying to raise it up a little bit to prevent water from sitting on there. That's really the intent of this, is not only to repair what's currently out there, but try to address the water issues. That's never going to be fully solved out there because of how flat it is. And the water wants to sit in that park, but we want to keep the water in the park and not on the parking lot. Because that's, that's the problem.
So the diagram in the packet, will, the whole area shown will receive a new surface. It's just, the difference is it's not being fully reconstructed. Part of it's just an overlay.
Correct.
And part of it's a full reconstruction.
Yes.
With fabric and, yep. Other questions or comments? All right, I'll look for action. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed signify by saying nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number fifteen is old business. Is there any old business? Item number 15 is old business. Is there any old business? Councilman Philhauer?
Uh, I guess I'll direct it to, to Matt. At the next meeting, I think, uh, on the agenda, I believe where we left, we're gonna have the liquor license discussion again. And you did reach out to current license holders to, for them to voluntarily, um, respond as far as what they, they pay for a license. What kind of, just a reminder that that's coming, is that still coming up in two weeks? Is that still the plan?
Yes, if you want it to be. That was your direction, yes.
Well, I think, I think the thought was, we wanted to have the current council address that versus, uh, a new council made up of three new members who aren't, uh, aware of what's going on with this. So I guess, assuming it's gonna be coming before us, then I guess my question then is, what kind of response have you gotten, uh, from current license holders as far as divulging some information or providing us some information?
I'd have to check my folder. Um, I'd say around 25 to 30% so far.
Maybe we can send a reminder. Is there any other old business? Hey, new business. Um, we do have some new business. Absentee voting has started. That's why we see the little voting booths back there. It's every day, Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. here in City Hall. Um, all the way up through Monday, the 17th, the election day, is Tuesday, the 18th of June. So you can come, um, vote ahead of time, right up till the day before the election. City Hall's open eight to five. Other old business or new business, Councilman Y?
There's also, uh, thanks, Mayor. There's also a public forum tomorrow night, is that correct?
Yep.
Do you have the details on that?
At LATI, it's, oh, is it at the Event Center? It's at the Event Center.
I, I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
I think it's 6:00 and 5:30, if you want to submit questions. Come at 5:30, and then the, um, forum will start at 6:00.
And that forum will include discussion on the Home Rule Charter recommended changes too, as I understand it, from, listening to Tim Sheen on that.
I think that's true, and they'll, they'll have, um, the committee will be representing the pro side of that ballot issue. And municipal league is sending a representative to represent the con side. So is there any other new business? Seeing none, are there any liaison member reports?
Mayor?
Councilman Philhauer?
Just a comment at the utility board meeting last week, uh, Adam Karst made the comment that the, the conversion to the rely-a-bank-for-bank service has gone well from their perspective. I hope, Kristen, you're gonna say the same thing from the, from our perspective?
That's good to hear. That was probably a lot of work, I'm guessing. Thanks, thanks to the finance departments of ours and municipal utilities, they did all the work. Any other liaison member reports? Okay, then we will be, um, going into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2, um, in order to discuss and consult with legal counsel on, um, some, um, economic development and personnel matters. And we do not expect to take action upon coming out. So I'll look for a motion, second to go into executive session. Moved by Albertson, second by Bueller. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, signify by saying nay. Motion carries.